Good morning and welcome to the Rocky Ham County Commissioners Meeting of November twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In attendance today, our board is fully assembled. We have Commissioner Coyle.
Good morning.
Commissioner Chercello. Myself, Commissioner Gardu. My honor to be serving is your acting chair. And also in attendance, we have Commissioner Electon Bombarella, joining us as well as long as along with our staff. So we'll move right into our opening. You have a physical opening for fire alarm testing?
We do.
Okay. Then we have.
I don't think we have.
It says opening, so I assume there was something to open.
No.
I know that might be silly, but.
Yeah, I think opening in their all openings is just means that they're whether it's electronic or otherwise that it's open the processes.
Okay.
So I move to authorize the senior director of facilities planning and I T to review evaluate proposals and return with a recommendation.
Any discussion?
No.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chercello? And I vote yes. All right, opening for vehicle lift.
I move to authorize the senior director of facilities planning and I T to review evaluate the proposal and return with a recommendation.
Yeah. Any discussion on this? Commissioner Chercello?
Yeah.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, communications center console for the sheriffs.
And this is for furniture and I move to authorize the high sheriff to review evaluate the proposal and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion on the furniture? There was another one.
Yes, you're right.
Console later, I.
You're converging.
Uh, Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chercello? And I vote yes.
Yeah, that grant funded console.
Right.
And.
Okay, so.
More furniture, number four. Dispatch Emergency Operations Center Furniture.
Yep.
Yeah, I move to authorize the high sheriff to review evaluate proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. All right, move on to the consent agenda.
So first we have minutes. Um, I move to approve the, let's see, the October twenty fourth non-public meeting minutes. The, um, I'm sorry, just going down, uh, the October thirty first, twenty four public and non-public meetings and the November seventh, twenty twenty four. We have. Yeah, not, yeah, exactly. I was like. And that is all.
Are we missing?
We're not doing the seventh. We have.
That's not done yet.
Yeah, I exactly. I was like, wait a minute. That's why I paused. I don't think I saw those.
Motion on the floor and second to approve the minutes. Discussion on the minutes?
The minutes were trying to.
Okay, so I have a little discussion on the, uh, the non-public minutes of October twenty four.
Okay.
Um. I, I think this needs to be revisited. Non-public session number four.
Okay.
Has two topics. And I, I, I think that we need to add in a separate set.
Label it as.
Yeah.
You'd rather.
Well, I mean, one had nothing to, the first paragraph had nothing to do with the second paragraph.
Okay.
Uh, we could discuss it in detail in non-public, but, um, I, I, I think that.
I have no problem reworking, just renumbering.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with what it says.
Is sufficient. It just you wanna. I know. And maybe it's because I should have sealed it. Maybe the issue is I should have sealed it in a different way. Um, so.
Well, there was a separate session. So would you review the minutes and then come back with a recommendation or revised? Okay, so.
We'll table the.
We're gonna table October twenty four, right? Uh, motion to table second?
Yes, second.
Okay, and, uh, on the table?
Yes.
Yes.
We all, uh, Commissioner Chercello?
Think we can do it.
Coyle?
It doesn't have.
We all agree. Okay, so on the motion to approve the other minutes, uh, the public minutes.
Yes.
Of October thirty first. Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay. Next discussion on the biweekly recruitment report. Uh, anybody want to comment on that?
Sixty seven correctional officer? Applications came in?
Sixty seven. What'd you do? Go to convention?
No, it's the, this is a product of using the short application form. I mean, what we're seeing, I think, I mean, is that.
So easy to apply now that.
People were getting.
More willing.
It's a volume game and even when you just still volume down, which is we all know that when you go, you know, you're still left with a larger pool. I mean, it's, it's a game changer and, you know, uh, did you want to say anything else?
No, no, I, I'm really impressed with those numbers, uh, that as well as the L and A twenty. Uh, and I agree with you. It's a numbers game. So the more people you can get in, you know, the more opportunities you have to hire these people.
Very short, uh, form that they have to fill out. They use kind of compresses and then they can get out there and then they'll still have to do the longer one, but you've got them hooked. But you have a lot to offer at the county. So it's just getting people in to then, you know, then we have a lot to sell and offer. So that's, those are great things. And when you, I mean, again, we talked about our, the, you know, what one of our objectives for this year, our goal of bringing in seventeen new L and As and, you know, we're tracked at, we have eight hired, five in the process, a few apprentices. I mean, we could hit our target goal by the end of the, you know, year and at the rate we're going sooner and it's.
Yeah.
I'm offering free housing my end, so it's working out well.
Oh, that's why you're gonna.
You really have that kind of space at your house?
Free meals, free housing.
Three meals a day, yeah.
You know, um.
Bowling.
Bowling.
The way that, I mean, the C box cells that were done up last night looked really nice and there was a whole shebang chips at, uh, in commissary.
Okay, so, uh, moving on, almost the same topic and H R nursing recruitment.
Yeah, I guess.
It's really all the same. We're doing well and keep up the good work and recruiting.
Not, we gotta end two M and As coming down the pipeline as well as two L, uh, hire two LPNs like this in the process, so.
And we had a lot of, just to interject, so two of the nurses that kind of joined us that had fired with agency, now that they're on the floor, I think I've sent four people that have approached us now to Autumn to connect with as well. So I had, uh, one of our R Ns on night shift has reached out and a couple, an L and A and another nurse and then another, I think the other one's an L and A. So in the last like week or this week since they've been on the floor, four others have actually approached us about joining.
That's.
Wow, so.
Positive influence.
Uh, yeah, so, um, we've been kind of having some of those conversations and Autumn has been kind of taking point on the other side of it, but it's continuing to have a positive kind of influx on that sense, which is great.
This is just great.
And, and the application process is going smoothly and quickly?
Yeah, um, Autumn still had handles a good amount for us, but there's some symptoms on our side and some education that we need to get in place, um, for it. But we have streamlined a lot of things. We're now Autumn just scheduling right into my staff's, um, calendar the interview while they're on the phone. And it's cutting out some of that back and forth or hold the candidate and Autumn and our team. Um, so we've been able to streamline a lot of that to turn it around further and through time for recruiting.
Excellent.
How, do you mind?
Another discussion on that?
Just a outreach to department heads. How are you liking, how is it working with that? It's like reviewing the initially those.
It's working really well for us. We've hired a ship technician and we have two interviews this afternoon.
Wow.
So it's great. Autumn's given us so much information that's really helped us. We've been forwarded to the candidates, make sure we get the applications, but she's given us a lot of the, the vital statistics that folks need to convince. So it's, it's working out really well for us too.
That's great.
It's great.
Um, just.
I'll just say, so, I'll talk about labor as open house last night, but I met a recruiter last night, recruits for the FBI. He came in last night and, uh, he asked how, thanks for going here and stuff like that and our processes and turnover and our past stuff. How long it takes to onboard? It was very impressed because FBI is a little different. Takes your gear, new background, everything else. But the process is so long, they lose so many people that, um, us typing things up here, it was really impressed that we're able to do that and get people on because that seems to be the key. They're losing people left and right when it takes so long.
Yeah.
And I mean, I really think this is just such a nice, um, comment on the, both the communication and collaboration among departments, which, I mean, I know we all strive for, but it's really effective. It's really effective. So thank you for everybody's contribution to that.
Okay, I think we can move on. We'll move on to payroll approval.
I move to approve the payroll expense, the amount of one million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents for the period ending November sixteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second. Any discussion on this?
Still right in line where.
It's a little high, like twenty grand or anything?
Well, we keep on having more new hires.
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. That'll do it right there.
And some occasionally, you know, people begin their four percent through, you know, their annual eval. So low by low, there should actually be incremental increases each payroll.
We call this a good problem.
Yes. Okay, so, uh, on, um, payroll approval, Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. All right, uh, moving on to commissioners, um, reports. Anybody have something they would like to report?
I'll just note that I went to, uh, last night, there was an open house of the Department of Corrections and it allowed families to see some of the work that, um, the officers and employees of the, of the, uh, DOC, all the work they do. And it was a great event. There was, I cannot believe, and I don't want to steal all your thunder because you've done such a good job, but it was incredibly widely attended. And, um, just a lot of like energy. It would, and so, uh, credit to you superintendent for putting that event on and, um.
I take no credit. I've, I'll talk about it later. I feel sorry.
But. Yeah, there was some, I mean, the, the demonstrations, everything really works.
Just trying to envision a jail having an open house.
I was thinking the same thing. It's just like we open the door and then we close it. I'm out there to walk. We'll visualize together. My vision.
So that I just wanted to.
Great, thank you. Uh, I don't have anything to.
Uh, yeah, I think I, I have something really quick. Um, as you know, many know, last week my mom passed on. And I just want to express my, uh, my thanks to everybody that's sent condolences cards. Uh, and the flowers that were sent. I'm not a big flower person, but the flowers are beautiful. So I just want to thank everybody, um, who worked for that and, um, you know, she came here knowing that, that the staff was far and on top. Uh, and they really took care of her. So I just want to say thank you, everybody.
Right, thank you. Okay, uh, let's move on to Department of Corrections. Inmate administrative transfers, transfer.
I move to approve an inmate administrative transfer dated November, uh, fourteenth, twenty twenty four, transferring two inmates from Carroll County Department of Corrections pursuant to New Hampshire RSA thirty dash B twenty one as recommended by the superintendent.
Second. Any discussion on the transfer?
Quick question. How does it work? Because we send, do we get, receive more from Carol because we send our, a lot of women up there? Or, what's your?
No, so it's about they need help with something. It could be like.
No.
Like one was methadone, so we, we'd help them out. We have other jobs, but then they always favors. So if we do a transfer to one, like sometimes we will do a transfer to Carol, that means we're not paying for that individual.
Right.
Um, for our females, when we just send them up, that never comes across here because that's being paid for, but there are times that we send others up. We especially high profile ones, you'll see, Carol County, Coas County, for those that are law enforcement, those kinds of things, when you put them someplace, they head up to there. So it's back and forth, give and take.
I just didn't know from a space, not so much a, I understand from a financial, but from a space needs if we take more because when we're, have a higher population up there in the.
No, it's just this one was unique and I haven't taken two at a time for them in a long time.
Yeah, I know, that's. Thanks.
Okay, um. Seeing no more discussion on this. Uh, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chercello?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Great. Facilities, uh, W B Mason Furniture.
I move to approve the W B Mason Furniture Furnishings and Equipment F F and E Agreement for the new municipal building, print amount not to exceed one million, seven hundred thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-four cents. And authorize the acting chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the senior director of facilities planning and I T.
Second.
Any discussion on the furniture?
Just a quick comment, um, is this a operation budget line or is this an opera line?
Yes.
Capital.
Oh, okay.
How much did we have budgeted for the, how is it?
We anticipated quite a bit of work.
Is it, it's coming in less than we?
It's coming in, uh, quite a bit less than expected. I think we'll probably end up spending it a little bit on the, you know, other furnishings and whatnot, but it's less than we managed to spend.
It's great.
It is great.
That is great. I mean, just unbelievable.
I know. The stars.
You know, excellent.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so change order request from Warren Street.
I move to approve a change order request for Warren Street Architects Incorporated for an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars to allow for additional onsite visits through the end of January, twenty twenty-five as recommended by the senior director of facilities planning and I T.
Second, uh, discussion.
Yeah, my understanding of this is, um, just so there's no lag, timing is very important. This is for putting somebody on site to make sure that everything goes very smooth, which I think is a smart move for short money, so.
Thank you.
Time.
That's it, exactly.
Yeah.
Time is money. Like this is really a value, uh, same, similar.
There's a lot in that side.
I know.
Be really valuable to have for them.
Just on a, you know, personal have, you know, being on site when you can just make decisions quickly makes all the difference in the world and having personal experience.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
All right, from the finance office, a discussion on the Aqua Money.
Project list.
Uh, Chuck, do you want to lead us on, on this?
Yeah, sure. So we, maybe it's easier to almost like start at the, the very last page where it gives the summary numbers.
Yeah.
So, because then you get a sense of what really was left and to a degree, it's, it's sort of the same as, as from six thirty that there's, there is a amount remaining for the DOC to like officially approve as actual projects being brought before it. And I know before we had talked about, um, again, the Harvey and our run up against the four point two-two-six millions split between two different, um, our, our project expenditure categories for the community corrections building. And so the discussion back when we're looking at six thirty twenty-four results was just have that amount go towards that. Well, um, in process along the whole time was actually the, um, I think it's Dan Cofflin as far as the um, engineering consulting as far as on water wastewater projects that the county could be doing that are needed. And so that's why I added in the note that that it, there's instead of adding on more of an allocation for the community corrections, there's almost like a greater more immediate need for saying water and wastewater items, um, that are going on. Uh, because there's many improvements there, uh, that are needed.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just a little bit confused. It, it appears that we have a million, hundred eighteen thousand dollars unencumbered money. Is that accurate?
At the moment, because we have an approved amount, but we don't have a matching contract or purchase order. So that's where there's.
An approved amount of what?
So.
Because the board proves the projects and so, for example, we might have something like one point one million for the water main replacement, but right now the only contracted first order that we have done is about a hundred thousand for, um,
Hundred and forty-four.
For novice engineering. And so, but we know that there is, you know, another million to actually be done for that. So it's a matter of awarding a contract, which would then in the accounting system would do a purchase order to encumber or obligate all this money. So I can already tell you that a million of that is basically, you know, almost, almost called for.
So.
That's been approved, but not, not.
Okay, so in, that's the plan for that money and we're gonna get it done before the end of the month.
Oh, yes.
I mean, for the end of.
Basically, the real number that we have left, even though on paper it's not, um, it's not obligated because we don't have the, the real number is a hundred and forty-four thousand. Isn't that, is that?
Well, again, so, so a million of that one point one is taken up by the water main replacement.
Right.
We have approved projects of that difference, but just not a purchase order or contract yet for that difference, which is about a hundred eighteen thousand. The real number to get done with addition on top of, you know, those, those two things is that four hundred and fifty-eight thousand. That's the real number to get as an approved project or projects. And then also have contracts and.
Have we identified those projects?
Well, that's why I'm trying to bring up that.
I mean, because we have six weeks left.
So we.
There is, uh, the water wastewater, if you can speak in more detail, it's gonna be way higher than that four fifteen eight.
Those bids are due on, um, December fifth, I believe, from, it's out to R S P now. The state just yesterday approved the plans.
Yep.
But the initial estimate was about one point one million. And that's for all the work that needs to be done so that we can discharge to the broker again. We've not done that for years and years. It's to reactivate an old federal permit and the feds, state asked us to do that in the event that the new building became completely full at all times with every bed in this facility and every bunk in Jason's building. They asked us to have that in the venue. So we've gone forward. We went up R S P. We awarded a contract to the engineering and those bids for the work to be done are due next week, but the engineers initial is a testing that's enclosed.
And you're, okay, so you're expecting to use most of this money for that project?
Uh, we can use all of it.
All of it.
Yes.
Right.
The only, the only thing that I could see is hopefully we don't get caught up if we're waiting for a state approval for anything because obviously if there's a deadline. We've got, you're really up against the wall.
We've been tracking the permitting at the same time. So they've been reviewing all the plans that Dan Cofflin wrote up. People we even went out to R S P for the work to be done with the note that subject, we got that feeling yesterday.
Okay.
So we're good to go on the plans as soon as we, you know, open the bids and you guys.
Yeah, I hope to lose any money.
No, no, it was certainly, I mean, the plan is to have it absolutely.
Yeah.
Completely obligated by.
Great.
Sure. No. Chuck, is there any, after this, is there any money that is in the, um, lost revenue column? That we can use for whatever? No, it's all done.
So, so basically, if you approve a new loss revenue project now, it's basically gonna take away from what's allocated for the new building.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I'm just, so that's the default. So that, so in all the formulas, once that happens, all the other loss budget projects will first. And then those, the grand total of all of those, because we've done a lot. I mean, you can see the whole laundry list of them all. Um, I mean, many different things. I think we're up to like the expenditure category six point one. I think we're up to letter N or something like that for loss revenue projects. And so, because I have to list them all out separately and reporting to the feds.
Yeah.
Both in the portal and narratively. And so, um, the, the kind of ending computation of what's left for the building is, you know, thirty-six, thirty-seven million of lost revenue less all these other.
Yeah.
Um, lost revenue products. That's what's left for the new building.
Okay.
As far as from lost revenue.
Right, right.
I mean, you still have like seven million or so to go of even using bond funds.
Yeah.
As well for non-qualifying items. And we do have some other, as you can see from some of the, you know, I, I give the updated funding worksheet with every Harvey.
So on the bonding side, you're, you're kind of spreading that out so we can kind of keep the, some of the money in the bank a little bit longer?
Well, no, so, well, I mean, maybe on the last revenue side, yes, as far as towards the building, yes. Um, because I want to use up what's qualifying items.
Yeah, okay.
You know, whether it's age back sections of, of the, uh, the building or it's water related stuff, so it's like qualified drinking water, drinking water act and and all that. Yeah, so I'm doing all the supposed qualifying on, you know, um, expenditure categories before I hit against loss revenue for the building.
Absolutely.
That's, that's the idea.
That's a really, that's very strategic.
And again, like the community corrections building is the easiest one for those two project codes to be able to, you know, absorb and go right up to the amount right away. Um.
Captain, you're right.
Yeah, so that's, so the bottom line is really about that four hundred and fifty-eight really, because those would be a difficult products to be approved. Like you was mentioning, we have many other ones that, that Dan Cofflin will have as a list and you're in those lists. It's like where the dollars fall and prior to his and.
But that will do the water, if we throw it all to the water infrastructure project. It's great. I mean, like, it's an expensive project. It's an important project and that's where we need, I mean, that's really necessary infrastructure for the future and.
And honestly, beyond that, Molly would be tasked with, Molly would be tasked as far as looking at outside of, of, you know, state level fiscal carry funds, aren't they? Uh, be looking at other federal grants to support sewage water related projects as well.
Yeah. Excellent.
Okay, very good. Um, let's move on to the T D equipment finance lease.
I move to approve a three-year capital lease agreement dated November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four with T D equipment finance appropriated and an annual interest rate of four point five four with payments in advance and authorize the acting chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the senior director of finance.
Any discussion on those lease?
This is tied to the, for, uh, terrorist vehicles.
And just a quick thing, we always do this arrangement because we do three years, but payments are advanced. So that way the first annual payment, no interest. Right. Is figured in. And then also we actually get the tiles, the equipment like twenty-five months into the three-year lease too, because we fully paid off the vehicles as well. And, uh, in what also, um, I mean, four point five four percent is, it's not, not a bad rate at the time. Um, I mean, yes, rates are starting to come down. Um, but again, uh, you know, it's a good deal. We've spread over three budget cycles. That way the impact is already felt in one budget cycle.
Right.
It's these expenses of these leases do hit the general fund. So we try to spread over also kind of like somewhat the useful life of the vehicles too.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
All right, human resources, uh, exemption requests.
I've moved to approve an exception request to personnel policy seven dash three, new appointment rate for a county attorney's employee at E L as recommended by the county attorney and senior director of human resources.
Second. Any discussion on this rate? A higher, above mid-level required with the amount of.
For victim witness advocate.
Yeah. Well, someone with a lot of experience.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Winter Wellness Initiative Amendment.
I move to amend the November seventh, two thousand and twenty-four motion to increase the total estimated cost of the winter wellness initiative blankets from twenty-eight hundred to twenty-nine hundred to the higher than expected shipping costs as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second.
Any discussion?
Self-explanatory.
I, I, I've heard other stories of UPS charging a little bit more during the holiday season specifically. I don't know if that, I have to look into it.
But to the extent that these, you know, the thing, I mean, the Lind chocolates have really been well received that these small initiatives are nice, um, thank yous and retention tools, so. Uh, it's overall short money for, uh, thanks, R Y, the nice recognition.
Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, long-term key shift key LLC service agreement.
I move to approve the shift key LLC service agreement, beginning with the date of the last signature, remain effective until terminated and authorize the acting chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the senior director of long-term care services.
Uh, discussion on this? I, I read a lot of objections that I'm not sure have been, uh, overcome. Um, I'm not sure if I fully understand the issues, but there were, uh, there's a liability issues that uh, Primex is recommending that we don't go along with this contract. But I don't know what.
So they.
Into this already?
So they actually accepted Primex's incentive that revised.
Oh, they accepted all those changes?
Yeah, so the original contract we had, I guess this had been looked into prior by my predecessor. Um, and it wasn't able to kind of come to fruition. And then when they partnered with On Shift, we sent those revisions to Primex and then they sent the updated one, um, with those changes. I'll verify to make sure that I'm not mistaken, but I'm fairly certain they said that this was the updated one with it. Um, one of the benefits for it is it's, it technically works like an agency for, per DM pool.
Right.
That they recruit their own staff locally and there's no buyout. So we can create our own per DM pool and also use it as another source to bring in staff.
It's just software. So the exposure, I mean.
There was a liability that was.
I know.
Primax was concerned with.
Sure.
But that's taken care of.
We had gone back and they did send a revised contract with, um, except, accepting of.
Okay.
But I will verify and if I misspoke, I will come back to you.
All right, I'm good with it. Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, uh, Sheriff's Office. All right, uh, sheriff's office, discussion on the civil rights evaluation tool. Who's gonna lead this discussion? This complicated tool that.
Hold on, hold on.
Hi, Ken, Commissioner.
Oh, okay, great, yeah.
After our last conversation, uh, Chuck and I tried to put our heads together, look and get this. Um, I had reached out to the state looking actually for, to see if they had some examples. In that conversation, they informed me and apologized that they are actually the recipient on this particular grant. So they are responsible for this tool this time. Um, so for this grant, it's not an issue, um, but when Chuck and I were discussing it further, it might be something we want to still move forward with. Just to be prepared, um, I'm sure there's going to be a homeland security grant probably coming down the line. Uh, we're looking at ENPG grants for the furniture that we just opened today, um, so this still may be needed in the future. So I don't know if Chuck, you could speak to that, if, if Molly's still trying to move forward on that or not?
Yeah, so she's moving forward on the furniture for the, the EOC, the emergency operations center for the new building. In fact, that's what, you know, as far as what award comes from the opening that we just have today. Um, that the intent is for that to be grant funded through this ENPG, uh, grant, which is a homeland security grant. Um, but yeah, so with this, this smaller grant, um, yeah, so the state sees this as just the sub recipient. So yay, we don't have to have the, you know.
Without.
Yeah.
But again.
Just dodging a bullet.
This temporarily, yeah, because it, it is a requirement apparently on, on the homeland's, uh, security grants. So we might as well do our work and be ready, so we're not scrambling like thirty days to put something into place.
We agree.
So Catherine, are you working on, uh, getting those details together for us to be able to do this on our own? Or are you working with Chuck to do that together or?
Get this stuff from the state that, I mean, it's like.
Find out what the templates are and, you know.
Don't.
Yeah, where we had left off, uh, Chuck and I, as well as Molly, our grant writer, we're gonna try and still produce some examples. I know there was, uh, it goes Cheshire County, uh, and the one out of New Jersey Chuck had talked about, trying to piece some of that together and formulate something that. Uh, would satisfy that toolkit.
Okay, I'm glad that we're working on that and that we dodged this bullet. Um, bid waiver request.
Um, I. Move to, uh, approve the two way communications, Motorola Solutions Incorporated proposal and bid waiver request. The amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from just back to projects, using the cops grant award funded as recommended by the high share.
Okay.
Uh, discussion on this grant.
Fully funded by the grant.
Fully funded, there's no other choice, who to buy the equipment from.
My guess.
And we're good. Okay, so on the motion, Commissioner Churchello.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle, and I vote yes. So where does that leave us? Department head updates. Uh, and we'll start with Alison.
Morning.
You've got the lead seat.
Alison McCoskey, senior director of human resources, um, my updates are that we just received the Thanksgiving gift. Um, occupational health is in the process of now setting up and appearing to, uh, take over all. That were previously, um, under an agreement with COEH. Quest, I'm still working with a byproduct of quest, they're kind of like in two lanes, one for one portion blood draws and stuff like that. And another division for drug analysis, something where it come up. Um, but we are still, I'm trying to work that out. I have talked to Dr. Timmons, who was the occupational health and medical director for COEH. He is retaining some small portion of business on certain aspects, um, talking to him about. Maybe entering into some sort of contract of ten ninety nine with him to just oversee any questions that come up in the physical that. We have been dealing with us on when they came up. It's not a lot, but there are a few, and, uh, it would be an oversight for my. Under his license on that, so more to come on that, I'm trying to work through that, but it was a good discussion and he was receptive to. Continuing on a small portion of something with us if that was, if it was to work out. That's all you want. Thank you. Oh, we do have the, um. Events today at twelve o'clock to honor the team award for facilities operations and they have another coin posted by the commissioners. Sure, thank you.
Uh, Jason.
All right, September Henry, Rockland County Jail. Um, we have about a hundred and forty one inside right now. Um, we are under eight openings left, so we're going very well on recruiting. Um.
Yes, you know, just, just real quick on that, you know, coming in four years ago, we were like half staffed, and now. To hear that news and the fact that you get sixty seven applicants, uh, is tremendous.
All our issues with mandatory overtime and.
Now people want overtime.
We had grievances over.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, unbelievable.
So I can tell you, us, uh, Cheshire County and Velma County are doing well with staffing. And had to do with them raising their pay to an appropriate amount to get people in.
So just a quick question, will we raise those numbers to Delaware County's followers?
Delaware County was already a little bit ahead of us, so they're still good in their area. Cheshire County just negotiated recently. Um, so the other counties now are looking at the three of us going, you know, while they realized. Everybody always said it's, well, it's not about the money, it, that's true.
It always boils down to being.
That's true, yeah, it's true to extent, maybe say staying might be other things.
Yeah.
But now they're kind of realizing, okay, it's the money to get them to the table, then you have to sell, like you said, we have good things at the county. Once you get to the table to talk to at least.
Yeah.
You can sell the rest of us.
Yeah, because I, you know, again, going back a few years back and half staff, you know. The, the mental health issues, the COVID, the whole ninety odds, we're really taxing our employees tremendously, so I'm really glad to hear that.
It is, it's, it's, you can see it on the staff that are here. Um, little thing, Silver County's looking at building their jail, they reached out to me, they want to see our community corrections. Not quite ready to show, just a bunch of wires and dust there, so we're on, Drew's gonna work for me and get some plans from, and look at our. Community corrections and, and when it gets closer to a little more refined, we'll have them come over and do a tour. Um, I, yesterday was in Concord for the freshman orientation for the new legislators. There was about a hundred, hundred and ten, uh, people there, um, different, um. Department heads from different places, nursing home directors, uh, county attorneys, commissioners, educated them about county corrections and. The impact they have and their role as an elected member, we do this every two years. So that was well attended and seemed to go pretty well, some questions up front, but some people stayed afterwards and asked, uh, more in depth questions, so. That was good. Uh, la- last night, we held an open house and it hasn't been done since, uh, pre-COVID. And what it is, we invited staff there and their family and friends to come on in, we weren't sure what we were gonna have. Um, so we sat down and made a, kind of made a plan to do tours, we would say tours of facility, we locked down the facility. And the tours went through, um, admin area, you got to see chapel, because we're, the Rockland County is the only one that has actual chapel inside the jail.
Yeah.
They actually went to our minimum housing unit and where we have housing made, so they got to go on there, it seems like. Uh, they got to go to several other places, but we ended up on C block, which is a, uh, one of our closed units where we do Medicaid assisted treatment. And in there we had, uh, our pepperball stuff out, we had some conjurban we found over the years out. We did a pepperball, uh, demonstration for them to see. We used our rap system, which is like swallowing somebody when they're, um, out of control, a demonstration on that as well, some light refreshments. Um, and then, uh, we did an awards as well. The years of service that we've done already, uh, we've given the pins out, people showed up last night. And our certificate, and then we do a rookie of the year, supervisor year, uh, employee of the year, an officer of the year. Uh, internally, uh, not through association county, we do this every year internally, we did that, gave them out a plaque and honored them if they were there with their family. Uh, Kim Smith, who runs the front lobby door, if anybody met her, she's an awesome lady, she showed up last night and. She was flabbergasted that she wanted, and she didn't know what to say this morning, she's like, I don't even know if I thanked you last night, I was so shocked and all. I didn't know what I said last night, I'm, I'm so nervous.
You know, just as an aside on Kim, she is always so kind to everyone that comes through that door and, you know. I witnessed it, you know, firsthand, her and on the phone, everything, she's just so. Kind to everyone and a place that couldn't feel intimidating or, you know, cold, she brings a wonderful warmth to it, so.
I'm gonna get our business card and say director of first impressions.
Yeah.
Exactly. No, it's true, it's game changer.
In California, that's what they use for people from, it is director of first impression, it's just FYI, that's where I stole it from. Uh, I remember that, so.
It's not stealing your credit.
So we had about, I would say seventy five to hundred people there. They also set up what, we actually worked with the inmates too. They actually, in one, in part of the area, they actually set up two cells, um, what it looked like if you were living inside of there. And staff, uh, the, all the people have to go in and visit what a cell looked like, and we had, we did have food out there, shavang chips and other things they see they're eating. Uh, the tablets, their clothing, that kind of stuff, so the inmates were involved on that kind of end. So, uh, Sergeant Buscanaera was there with his camera taking photos, everyone photos inside the cells, we are gonna get them made up to the families. Did allow them to bring their cell phones into that unit so they could take pictures of their family inside of those kind of areas. Um, we're gonna regroup, and again, my staff, total staff, total, uh. We had people volunteer to run the door, Mangon wanted to do that, we had people to volunteer to a lot of things. Um, we're gonna regroup and I have ideas to make it even better next year, I want to do it more towards the summer, I want to build a pouncing house for the kids. Ice cream stuff and, and really make some, turn some things around, uh.
But the inmates.
Honestly, so, yeah. You know, so we did a lot of things we wanted, just to make it bigger.
I just have one question for you.
Hmm.
Did you do the demonstration and did you adjust the height of the?
They didn't do VR.
We didn't do the VR.
Okay.
So next, but next year, that's something like we want to add in maybe the VR, but we need to do that multiple spots.
Yeah.
Um, so we're, we're, we're getting there, but for not knowing who was gonna show up last night, and this will be done like biannually. Because you don't want to get, you want to keep it fresh.
Yeah.
Um, and then we'll open up to more commissioners and other people want to come in too, so we're gonna get tickets out so we can. Gauge what we're having come in and, and you know, that kind of thing, this is kind of. Do it together, see what, see what happens, but I, I am really impressed with my staff. The inmates behaved too in, in, and decided, uh, the jail where we had to lock them in for a couple of hours. I couldn't ask for anything better than what happened.
On the lockup to raise some money for local charity, you may want to lock up, uh, Commissioner Tomorolo.
Maybe we'll get that dunk tank back in here, do some things that you would fill, but, um. I, I just was, uh, very impressed and very proud of my staff and, and the inmates too, and they, they, you know, they could have been out of control and they were not.
Yeah, sounds like a good.
And that's all I have to say.
Awesome.
Great, thank you, Jason. Chat out.
Um, Shanelle Coleman, senior director of long term care services, our census on the nursing home side is a hundred and thirty five. Forty eight on the assisted living side, um, we have no residents with COVID, we do have two staff members with COVID. Um, just in general updates, the meals on meals fridge is a freezer cooler, it's been out of commission, so working through a couple pieces on those. Um, interim, we have a plan in place that, um, for the, that, the item. Um, I'll connect with you and working on, um, getting the contract from them. The dietary RFP is out, um, so we'll be setting up different, um, times. And I'm working with Jason and her team so that everyone will be present for those pieces. Um, hiring so well, so I'm excited about that, we're looking at improving processes right now because we had such an influx. I think since I've been here, this is the first orientation that we have more of our own staff coming in than agencies significantly. Um, so now we're just kind of looking at some of the systems that we can improve now with getting schedules kind of done more timely. To hand out, um, and also being able to, it's a great pleasure to say, um, figure out which contracts to cancel. And making sure we're doing that more timely, so those systems are currently in the works. Um, and then we're looking at our orientation process in general to have that be a more interdisciplinary, um. Hopefully, I know we talked about it prior, having Jude's team talk about the fire drills and kind of have it, people speaking to their faculty. The win- winter wonderland setup is started, if you haven't been through the atrium, please do, it is so much joy. And every day you go, there is something different, and we will have that event in December open to the public, family, um, staff. Um, Mason's coming to decorate cookies, we decided, so.
What is that date?
Um, it's the twenty third, it's the first day of school vacation, it's a Monday, I'm fairly certain it's the twenty third.
Yeah.
Uh, but it looks really nice and the residents go through and we were gonna wait on some of the inflatables and they asked for them to be back and. Um, so they're really excited about that. Um, we have our, um, chaplain going to the RFPs in the works, could that contract end soon? So that will be coming very soon. Um, hopefully this week we'll be able to nail down the date that some of my, myself and some of my team are gonna be going to Merrimack County. So we'll be able to figure out our Medicaid process, which will hopefully help with some of the gaps and financial burden that we're experiencing moving forward. So I'm excited for that. Um, and then my positive, and it's just exciting to me. Um, since low hanging fruit, but I was really excited, we got our first invoice for the change going from, um. So we, Rob and I just got all of our printers to automatically print black and white. And then you just have to actively switch to color, so we're still printing in color of our lines, one line item alone went, um, from a coffee. Even of almost four hundred and thirty dollars or.
Unbelievable.
Such just a trivial thing, um, wasn't anticipating it to be quite as large. But in addition, our overall printing over to deep breath too, so I think some people are being more mindful of what they're printing as well, so the waste has gone down. But then from a printing in general, um, that's a small hanging fruit, that was just very exciting for me.
It was probably, how, what was the time, like a month?
One month.
One month?
Yeah.
Wow.
That's awesome.
That's about five years.
You know, it's like one person making such a, it just really is, like, it's unbelievable.
Still prints in color and, you know, some of the times I chuckle because you'll walk through like the administration side and flyers are in black and white. And I was like, you guys, if you can, and they're like, no, 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 it's not necessary, it's like, oh, my heart. Um, but like the residents and those things, the color is still there and we're still utilizing it, it's more just being mindful of what we're printing. So it's not just printing because of a logo or things like that, it's unnecessary. So it was really exciting, I wasn't anticipating it to be quite so high, but when Brenda first told me and she was like, hi, I'm so excited. Yeah, so it was, it was just a very low hanging fruit, but, um. I was happy. And that's it for now.
Okay.
That, that's great, that, to me, that's an example of private sector style, running in government, you know, running efficiently and all those little things. It's, it's an attitude, it, besides it adds up, but it's an attitude of how we operate, and I commend you for bringing that to our. To the facility, uh, really good job. All right, Chuck.
Uh, Chuck Nickerson, senior director of finance. Um, I don't give too much details because Drew can fill in, but we did have, uh, a good construction meeting the other day. And some of the building oversight committee members came over for a tour afterwards and I hadn't done a tour, it's only done in three weeks, but. Just amount of progress, even just three weeks, I mean. Most of the brick facade, I think, is like done and they're gonna be, what, fully done by, I think, the end of the calendar year, I think that's slated for that, and. Again, they're already, what, painting all of the plaster over in the DOC section and, and even on the, the block walls inside. I mean, it's, it's, it's quite a bit.
We locked out with the mild winter.
Do we have a timeline on those big windows or?
We don't, no, the back is completely closed.
Yeah. I was just wondering.
I don't know, I know, it'll be.
They've done a great job getting it weather tight, I mean, in spite of the windows, but I, you know, from a construction standpoint, you're like, oh.
Yeah. It'll help with winter conditions, right?
Yeah, yeah, and that's, that's a goal, cut down those winter condition costs this time around as much as possible. Uh, Jonathan Hallie from Warner Street was also out paying a visit and he was, I think he was very pleased. Yeah, he was very, he was smiling quite a bit, and I think each department's gonna love their, their space. I mean, I love the atrium too, I know the atrium, the, uh, the amphitheater, how it's gonna be, so. It's gonna be clean line of sight and even hearing too, because we've all been to those delegation meetings, you know, down in Elton. That, you know, you can't see, sometimes you can't even hear what's going on down front, so it's, it's nice, that's gonna be clean line of sight for anyone that's. You know, again, there'll be a couple handicap spots down the front.
Accessible elevator.
Accessible elevator down. Visual.
That's great.
Yeah, so it's, it's really, it's really good, I think, cats can absolutely love, I think each department's gonna love their, their area.
Kathy Stacey has the best office in the house.
Office I heard, she's not there, but. According to Tom.
She's got the best office in the house, she does.
She said after working here, how many years, thirty years, that she, she should have the best office, I think that.
Um, let's see, I think the, the draft invoice for the next Harvey one is, is in, again, I'm probably just looking. You know, we've been going for this, have that as a separate item on the agenda, probably in the payroll week. So I expect maybe in two weeks, so first week in December, they'll probably be on the agenda. Uh, I think this works out better doing it that way, um, it's on his garage to try to get things out. You know, so the commanders can look at things, so I think that. You know, so the commissioners can look at things. So I think that works out. Best and it still works out as far as timing of payment, the hiring to pay the subs. And that's what's helped, you know, timing payments helped them keep their subs on and making subs want to work for them and. They get the best, you know, pricing.
That, that makes, that makes a huge difference being in. Working on a subdivision in my hometown, Billy Holmes. Keeping the vendors paid and happy is going a long way because they want to stay there. They, you know, they, 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 they don't want to leave the stuff.
No one wants to chase money.
So that's good.
Yeah, thank you for putting that change over with Warner Street because that makes a big difference. As far as addressing things, because you know, sometimes it'll happen like maybe. What, every twice a month or whatever, as far as, you know, currently, as far as Caroline Corville being on site to actually. Address things and again, on the fly decisions is a problem. Okay, work on a solution, done. Okay, go forward. Especially again, we still have some lead time issues on certain things, so. Broker you can address and time is money. Time is money, so. So thank you for all that. Otherwise, very busy, obviously with everything, grants are very busy. Finally got things straightened out to the feds on the rental assistance one. They officially accepted our. Information document request, so that's been fully satisfied. They're gonna approve our closeout report momentarily. So that's good news. And then I have one quarter left to go for rental assistance two. It's kind of funny because we had to move expenses from admin expense from rental system one to two. And move ten assistants from two to one, so. Again, that zero change in, in expense. But then I got a response from rental assistance two folks asking, why is there a decrease in demographics? It's like, so left hand's not. Talking to the right.
That's bureaucracy in government, so good job navigating through that.
All it worked out, yeah, it worked out in, in the end. This was painful.
Yeah, that was extra work for you.
Yes, that portal does not, the treasury portal for rental assistance does not work very well. Now, that was another one AM day on Friday, so. But anyways, very good. As usual, we had a good meeting with D H S about the pilot program. A grant, so it was regular status update yesterday. Going well. We're on the verge of hopefully working out a subcontract with Silverthorn. Well, it's every man on Monday, as far as for them supplying a driver. They do have the bus already and. And then Wendy Altman from the HHS just asked us to also run the results of that, you know, subcontract with them. But hopefully, you know, if, if, and we'll obviously get primary review that contract too, but it's like. A lot of moving parts or, or terms are needed for that. It's basic cost reimbursement. And so that way we can really get things up and running as far as getting additional individuals to Silverthorn. And again, that's mission of this program, get more seniors to receive their day and delay their institutional care.
And I think the two individuals, not to cut in, the two individuals that have sent came in, even in their short amount of time, have already brought forth a lot of ideas. Whether even setting up office hours in the day programs so families can come in. So even some of the things they were talking about, it was really exciting to kind of hear and that was just one weekend.
Yeah, according to Silverthorn to, like Chantel said, have office hours like eight thirty, twelve thirty or whatever, right there on site for. To like onboard people and do the intake.
That's awesome.
So Silverthorn is full, right? They're not.
I don't.
This wrong.
There wasn't one time.
Yeah.
When I checked with them the last time, they just, they were full, they were maxed out.
Yeah, I think that there's still room for both. It's gonna always have been slow because depending on the client tells and those pieces, the, one of the big barriers. Is transportation for people to get there, which is the subcontract that we have the meeting on Monday about. To be able to assist with the transportation.
Have you contacted Community Crossroads?
I handed the information on.
Okay, great. Wonderful, because they might be assistance in that.
Yeah, so I didn't, when you gave it to me, I hadn't had a chance to, but I did hand it on to the individuals that have some started.
Or the cart and there's a, yeah, cart.
Cart is big in the dairy sale area.
Exactly.
I think they're getting more federal dollars.
That's what I was saying. And again.
Yeah, that's an acronym. Right?
I think it's C A R T T.
No, just one team.
Just a thank you to the departments and please bear with us as some of our deadlines for different things kind of change, like payroll processing. Or AP submission, or maybe we're a little bit more strict around enforcing current deadlines. Because of the holidays, it creates a little bit more of a challenge for our due dates and things. Because again, like for example, what the deadline. For AP, you know, for Christmas, I know that people are doing, you know, taking vacations, time off. So again, thank you for working with us on, on those. Thank you. Right? And I will say, sorry, what was I saying? So Brenda. Again, testament to as far as you're, you're mentioning, Jason, as far as your employee, as far as Ken, that she was stunned. So Finance Office, Linda Menard got Employee of the Year and she kind of stated that the. Conference that she was listening to was being said about, you know, always this person. And as mentioned, it's Finance Office and she was looking around the tables and. From finances here, and they call her name and then she doesn't remember much of anything else. Kind of shaking, you know, as she was walking on stage. So she was, you know, very surprised. Very thankful and my folks even arranged that like do a little separate celebration for her. On Wednesday when she came back to work. So she got like even a secondary surprise, so.
And so, so deserving. She's like the, someone who would jump in and help with anything and just has such a. Positive attitude that is sort of infectious for everyone. So it's like, it's so nice to see. Someone, you know, get, get the award and get acknowledged for their, what they bring to the table.
All right, Jude.
Good morning. Jude Gates, Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT. Also all in facilities. I don't have a lot to report this week. We're busy. Dealing with the ever-changing weather. We've got some condensate issues in the boiler room that we're dealing with. Changed out a kitchen hood yesterday, steam coil is, it's a warranty we've been chasing for about eight months. So we were happy to get that done before winter settled in. Got some sewer work happening across the street. They want to get it finished and get it paved before it's too late. We're, we're all but done in delegation. So they gave me a couple more things yesterday, but we're almost done. The ramp worth standing on is having your victory taken. I did really have a good job. Our new pump carpenter is doing a wonderful job. He's just like, everything has to be done so. And it is, it's very nice. The building oversight committee, they were very well pleased with the walkthrough. There were a couple of ad hoc members. David Welch, who was involved when the jail construction was done, he's been coming to a lot of the meetings. John O'Connor. Who had been really active with the space allocation subcommittee and the engineering and maintenance subcommittee. He's been coming along to those meetings. He went all the way up and across and down with his game. We needed a great job. Jean Sharon popped her order just to kind of say hello as well. Yeah, it was very well received and I think. It, it does get to be more and more impressive all the time. It looked big and, and then when they put the walls up, it looked so much bigger.
Yeah.
So it's really coming along.
It's so true. Once you're, the spaces, you'd think in closing the spaces would make them smaller, but it's.
And then dispatch, when, when we get to the point that people are gonna want to go through there, it's pretty great because the floor is sunken floor. So all the cabling and whatnot is below the floor and they have window, they're gonna just be so happy in there. It's not even. Everyone, everyone will be well pleased when they get in.
Great.
And every time we take your tour, like you're looking at your mechanicals and you're checking out this and that, but it's also like so cool. Everybody's, we always have a good time when we do the walkthrough. It's a lot of fun. I think everyone will be really pleased when it's done.
Thank you, Jude.
That's all I have to say.
Great, thank you, Jude. Layla, have anything you'd like to share today?
Oh, I think we can just straighten up the time for next week's meeting.
Oh, yes. I am available at our normal eight-thirty time. I was. It turned out I, I, I was avoiding a conflict, but that. That group decided because it was the day before Thanksgiving that they were not having an early morning meeting for Wednesday. So if you want to meet at eight-thirty. I'm amenable to it.
Fine with that. Whatever you want.
I have to be remote on Wednesday and I'm happy to accommodate any time that works for you guys. So.
Does anybody else have any issues, regular?
We just have a divisional meeting, but I'll just send something over to you guys.
That's fine. All right, so eight-thirty, then everybody can begin earlier the better.
Right. Then go home and make stuff.
And then that meets the deadline, submission deadline is tomorrow. Submission deadline. I'm sorry, I don't need to hear your thunder, but I'm.
Tomorrow, tomorrow at two PM, agenda submission deadline and. Have Jane change the calendar.
Sorry.
Again.
I'm sorry, alert the kitchen. I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. Well, we could meet on Thanksgiving, Thursday morning, right?
Be the first Thanksgiving I haven't worked.
Moving on, Sheriff.
Honestly, I might still go.
Good morning. Nothing really new to report. We've been deploying our. Drone out. We did a search in Nottingham and we've been assisting Brentwood. With, with Drone, which is, actually works out really good. I mean, the hotspots actually directs. Firefighters right to, through Google Maps, right to where the fire is to help put it out. So it's definitely getting used. I tell you. It's probably one of the best assets we've ever received, but yeah, you know, helping all these. Especially who would know that we're gonna have fires in Brentwood and stuff like that. It's crazy, but. No, otherwise than that, everything's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. And that concludes our department updates. So we'll move on to new business, old business. Anybody have business to discuss?
I do, please. I, we, we spoke a month or six weeks ago about entertaining a change order from Harvey to do the water line. And the pedestrian improvements where DOT is requiring us to close off all of the. Facilities driveway across the street from the nursing home. We have that change order. It is within the allowable amounts. I just wanted to let you know that it's come through.
Awesome.
Yeah, it's just a hair under a million and we've committed. Ninety-nine thousand already to the engineering. So it's the one point one that we had targeted. We won't know where we are on the other piece until we'll just commit for the wastewater work. But I did want to let you know that change orders come through from Harvey, so I'm pretty excited to.
That's really great. I mean, that's so great. It's just like.
That water main has been on our boards for like fifteen years. It's an old, old type. So that'll be wonderful for us.
You know, we were talking about the faces of the new building, but all the infrastructure work that is happening in conjunction.
Right.
Is like, it's like, it's still my heart. Because it's like, this is really the future. And so when, I mean, thank you, it's just. It's going to be beneficial for so much.
For a long time. Yeah, I'm really excited about it.
You talk about building your, you, we, you know, in these big projects, you want a building for thirty years. And this is, we're putting infrastructure that's gonna even outlive, outlast that. So it's great.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jude. Anybody else? Okay, so I have an item, old business. The cemetery plot. That I brought up, that is, that we own. I contacted the town manager.
In Seabrook.
In Seabrook and they had a meeting with the board of selectmen and they are perfectly happy to. Accept the, the property and sell it to the person who's interested in it. So it's, it's in our court. It, it goes, the quit claim, quit claim deed would be submitted to the town of Seabrook, New Hampshire. I, I found a form online, but I'm not sure if we have something internally that we can, that we have. Yeah.
Oh, I mean, that's just deep. It's not a big deal, that aspect. I'm like, I do if we did. But the, the, I think what we should do just from, because the delegation, because I think there is some ambiguity. In the statutes about our obligation to get delegation. So we, with the, we have a scheduled, the delegation is a meeting on the eleventh.
Yes.
So why don't we just plan, ask them if we can take it up on the eleven? And because you've advanced the cause, we now know what we can do. We'll get delegation approval. So everybody's, we're all like. Super, understand, and then we can shoot up a deed on the twelfth. It's like.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's great. So we'll discuss that with the delegation and I don't think there'll be any objection. It's almost silly that we even have it. We don't really need it. Yeah, right.
But then it just covers everything through.
It's gonna make that family happy.
Right. Well, thank you for reaching out. That was a nice part to transit, to get it done.
Okay, good. Thank you. And I don't have any other. Business, public comment. Don, want to say anything?
Everybody turns. Wow, you're the only member of the public here.
Okay, great. All right, with that, I think that we move into our non-public session.
To enter into non-public, we're going to nine-one-eight, calling three, starting personnel.
Any discussion? Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chirichello? And I vote yes. We are in non-public. Thank you. Hello, everyone. We're back from our non-public session and Commissioner Coyle has motion for us.
Yes, we had a number of non-public sessions and I moved to seal those minutes indefinitely because they could adversely affect the reputation of someone other than a member of this board. And I, we don't have a definitive time on any of those items, so that's the basis for indefinite sealing.
Second, okay. So any discussion on sealing the minutes? Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chirichello?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And at this point, I think technically.
We're gonna most into adjourn.
So, so moved.
Second, to adjourn, Commissioner Chirichello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are adjourned from our first meeting.